And everywhere I went Saturday, I saw evidence of our staff in the city. And I've got to tell you, I spend time with chosen workers all over this kind of golf. And we have got the most incredible staff ever. Not only were they helpful, but they're sweet about it. They -- it's like it's their pleasure. I mean, they were on golf carts at Jennifer Hills, they were on golf carts at Fort Hill, and then they were in golf carts helping us with the valets parking at the Governor's Mansion. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Commissioners. And I'm going to write a letter to the State Journal saying, "We are very blessed in this city to have partners that help us with everything." And I can't see all of them out there, but I can tell you, I would put our Parks and Rec and our city public works, I would put departments of this city up against anything in this state, and we would win.
Thank you all.
All right, thanks for that info. And I'm sure the appropriate permits from the state for the bridge will -- I'm sure our staff can help with that. Commissioners, have any other questions for the next item?
Yeah, I'll do it off here. That's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're going to tag team one another, but I'm going to start it off. My name's Donna Hecker. I'm president of Walk Bike Frankfurt. I have some pictures to pass around the table that didn't -- there should be one for each of you, plus one extra of each. Just pass those around. About a month ago, Walk Bike Frankfurt became aware of an opportunity with regard to resurfacing work that will be done pretty soon, apparently, on US 60 West. By way of a little bit of background, in 2007, Walk Bike Frankfurt put together a bicycle and pedestrian master plan with a lot of public input that was subsequently adopted by the City Commission late 2007, Franklin County Council of Porton, early 2008. And one of the components of that master plan was sidewalk and bike lanes previous to US 60 East and US 60 West. So when we learned about a month ago that the state, in fact, had plans to do work on US 60 West, we kind of sprang into action, put together a -- with the help of Troy Hahn, put together a proposal, which is in your packet, for the addition of bicycle lanes and new sidewalks on Louisville Road from Lafayette to about 127, maybe just beyond 127, but at least Lafayette, right, 127. The existing sidewalks, as you can see in those pictures, are in really bad condition. There is not currently a crosswalk at the entrance to Jennifer Hills Park. There is a bus stop that is between Jennifer Hills Park and Berry Hill, or the entrance to Berry Hill that does not have any sort of designated crossing facility to get to This project is in the planning stages. I appreciate the haste that you all let us get on the agenda tonight because I just found out today that they're probably going to start letting it out to bid within a month and start work by the end of this year. So the proposal that you have in your packet, we think that the improvements are going to be a wonderful complement to the improvements being made at Jennifer Hills Park, which we're looking forward to. They'll benefit all the roadway users, including cyclists, pedestrians, moms with strollers, wheelchair users, anyone who is not a motherized person on that roadway. And we believe that bicycle and pedestrian accommodations make our community healthier, wealthier, and more attractive to new residents and investors. So what I'd like from the Commission is to consider this. It's -- I'll put together for you. We met with some city staff earlier in the week, and this is all work that the state would be doing as part of its resurfacing project. The city's financial commitment at this point would be nonexistent. There is no -- the city would be asked to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the state for maintenance of the bike lanes and sidewalks once they're in place until such time as the state redoes the work. And I don't have a good picture of it, but what the work would entail, basically, would be, currently on that stretch of roadway, there are four 12-foot lanes and one 15-foot center lane. This would reduce those traffic lanes to 11 feet each, and that center turn lane to 12 feet. So that would give us enough space for a 4-foot bicycle lane with a -- well, not quite 4-foot, but almost 4-foot bicycle lane with 2-foot buffers on. So there'd be a gap between the bike lane and the traffic.
And still plenty of room for ambulance?
According to Chief Will Hoyt, it shouldn't pose any -- where's the chief? The chief felt that there was plenty of room on the roadway for emergency vehicles, yes.
Yes.
So, you know, the plan ticks all the boxes that KYTC requires for improved bicycle and pedestrian accommodations. It also fits in nicely with our application that we turned in a couple of years ago to become a bicycle-friendly community. One of the key measures that was included, our feedback information, was improvements on major arteries, such as on US 60. So we're happy to answer any questions about it.
Any questions?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I'm not always good at doing two things at once, such as listening and reading at the same time.
That's okay.
This is going to go past the 127 intersection as well?
At this point, our plan is for it to go to the 127 intersection. That 127 intersection is a very problematic one. It sees a great deal of pedestrian traffic. Selis is here tonight. He just finished working on a sidewalk survey with the Department and other agencies. And that intersection was one that really came under scrutiny. We're asking the state to provide better crosswalks there, pedestrian refuges, between the turn lane and the traffic lane.
Do they have any plans to continue that sidewalk? I guess it's on the county line coming into the city as well, in that west portion of 127, of US 60 toward Louisville, past 127. I've had a few people try to get in touch with me in regard to their runners, and they want better sidewalks.
My understanding is that that phase of US 60 work is the next step.
Okay.
That their first step is to go from Lafayette to 127, and the next step will be 127 and beyond.
Great.
And at that time, you know, we are concerned with putting another --
I think it's fantastic.
Are they doing the sidewalks at the same time?
If the city asks the state, if the city asks the state to do so, then yes, they will consider it, as long as the total cost is less than 20 percent of the project cost. They will, you know, they are mandated to consider it. They're not required to do it. But traditionally, if there's a large, you know, if there's a strong backing on the local way, and especially since we had that master plan in place, that gives us more credibility.
Right.
This looks really good. What's the maintenance responsibilities, just to get the debris, pebbles, et cetera, off the?
Yes, and to do any repairs that might arise between the time of this work and the next. But that is subject to...
Right. Okay. I guess some potholes?
Primarily, it's debris, sweeping the shoulder, keeping the sidewalks free of debris. We have put into this proposal a request that the state stabilize those cliff faces along the sidewalk, which is a lot of the, as you can see in these pictures, the seepage that occurs during the winter time. If you're a wheelchair user, much of the sidewalk is impassable.
It's been like this since 1976. I can testify to running on that stuff back then.
Yep, yep. Here's a great one here, where you can see the amount of debris that ends up on the sidewalk.
A lot of people just walk over it.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Here's Troy Hearn, the bike. I should, I would be remiss if I didn't mention Troy Hearn. Troy is the Bicycle Pedestrian Coordinator for the State of Kentucky, and this is Troy's drawing of the before and after, you know, before the bike lane and after.
Where did you all get the number here that the local property values increased 5 to 20 percent with presence of bike lanes on US 60? You talking about just this strip of US 60?
That is, I believe, a national figure that Troy pulled from the DOT.
Yeah. That's the only critical thing I have of this. That's kind of like the tooth fairy. You know, if it was the case, I'd sure want to buy up there real quick. But I don't, I don't think that, I think that's just sort of, like you said, that's sort of like a national-type figure. It's not necessarily something that's going to exist somewhere.
Yeah, quite a few studies that have been done in the last 20 years or so have shown a marked increase in property values.
Oh, I have no doubt of that, but I would think they'd have to be more...
Specific, area-specific.
Yes, ma'am. And more comprehensive than just that one spot. But anyway, this looks good to me.
Two thumbs up.
Tom, do you, what do you, is there anything you're worried about?
No, the only thing I would say is the same thing I said on the East West Connector, that the language on the maintenance via periodic sweeping and not just simply say free from debris, you know? You won't be able to meet that standard. We can't...
Right, I think what it says in the guidelines is just that, a schedule.
Periodic sweeping. I think that, and then the striping.
The striping, yes, sir. Thank you for mentioning the striping.
Maintenance of striping.
And I think you mentioned the last time also a timing, because the winter times, you won't really be able to, you do what you normally do, like there's so much snow, but not, too many people are going to be riding bikes during that time anyways. I think you had mentioned something about a time frame.
Little bit of a difference there. I was referring to a shoulder lane that was not part of the roadway surface itself. In this case, we're dealing with actual roadway surface. So of course, it would be incumbent upon us to keep that roadway clear for all users.
Yeah, but that's, but in the, in the, when they scrape the snow, it's going to be right there in the bike lane. Isn't that where the leftover snow is going to go?
Yes.
On the sidewalk.
On the sidewalk, which is where I think it went last year.
Right, okay. So it's just going to be one of those things that won't work out as well as it will in the summer.
Of course, you know, you all were wonderful about going through and clearing the trail at Riverview, you know, which wasn't even a roadway, but just, you know, a mixed-use trail. So I did a wonderful job of getting that cleared for people to use it.
And that agreement was staying in effect until they repave the trail?
Right, until the next paving. That's great.
Any other commissions? Thank you.
Well, if we could just buy a few more minutes of your time for walk bike issues, if I haven't used, if I haven't used my allotment. Selis is just going to really briefly address this sidewalk study.
Just to kind of bring everybody up to speed. So I'm sure all of you are aware that the Franklin County Health Department got a grant to help complete a pedestrian master plan for the city, very similar to the walk bike master plan, except with a more narrow focus just on pedestrians and walkability, and also with a focus on like ADA compliance. And so the Health Department has partnered with Walk Bike to do that because we're a pretty good source of volunteer labor. And we've also partnered with ADA representatives and Kentucky State University and a number of city departments because we think it's especially important to get feedback from Public Works and Emergency Management in particular. And in essence, we got our, all the stakeholders we could think of together, including Tommy. We have a city commissioner on the planning team. And identified all the streets we could think of that seemed like obvious candidates for new sidewalks, and surveyed the public on where they would and would not like to see sidewalks. And that was actually some guidance we got from the, from the Commission, I think, with, excuse me, when Don brought this up. A while ago, I think it was mentioned that we shouldn't just be asking folks where they want sidewalks, but we should be asking where folks don't want them as well. So we tried to get as comprehensive a feedback from the public as we could, and then also ask folks, you know, to identify or suggest streets that we obviously hadn't thought of. And we got a great response on the surveys. We got about 279, or exactly 279 folks who've completed the surveys and who put in their input, which we were really pleased with. We had a public forum. We had a two or three dozen folks who showed up to that. And right now, we're in the process of kind of ranking that and putting together a suggested priority list for new sidewalk development in the city. The list is tentatively ranked right now just purely in terms of public response, in terms of what the public says they did or don't want. But we want to get feedback, you know, still from like Public Works and from Emergency Management, et cetera, so that some practical considerations regarding public safety and even feasibility can get kind of factored into things. But obviously, it's our hope that as much as possible that the list will, will just reflect the community's wishes. And we've done our best to really reach out to folks and to try to solicit input. And the planning team's all been really great. Oh, DFI Britain, a member of the planning team. I couldn't, I mean, the truth of the matter is, I'd have a hard time listing off the top of my head everybody who's been involved with this, but we really appreciate all the support we've gotten from City Stan. And we're hoping that we'll have a list that'll be really helpful to the city, not just in terms of, not just in terms of giving you an idea of what the community, where the community would and would not like to see sidewalks, but like the walk bike master plan. You know, once you get something like this in place, it's a lot easier to get the safer house of schools grants and to, you know, to get the state to do some of this work for us, frankly, et cetera, when there's a master plan in place that's been built by the community and supported by the community leaders. So hopefully, we'll have a list to submit to you all for your consideration here at the end of the month. Everybody has any questions?
Yeah, how did you survey, so the city had like 300 and something, or 200 and something responses? How did you get those? Was it random sampling, or what did you do?
No, we were, tried to be pretty aggressive about just publicizing the fact that we were seeking that input. It was an online survey, and so we did most of our advertising online. But, you know, we advertised in the State Journal, print and in a news article, but also heavily on their online page. And then targeted the various email groups of the different organizations and partners that were involved, and did word of mouth as best we could. And actually, paid advertising on Facebook is a really good way to, if you're ever trying to just reach as many, like, you know, folks in a particular demographic as possible, and in this case, we were trying to reach everybody who lives in Frankfurt, that's usually a pretty cost-effective way to do it, as long as they're online.
Any other commissioners?
I don't do Facebook, and I know a lot of my friends that don't do Facebook.
It was a public forum.
So I just wonder if there's another way to tap into another segment of the population? And anytime you survey people, you're going to exclude certain segments of the population, but that sounds like it was heavily electronic and so, was there some other thing, other than, you said you did random thing in the newspaper?
Yeah, we had, well, we held a public forum at the library and just tried to promote that in other ways as best we could, including in the newspaper. I mean, you know, and I know, I know that a lot of folks here have paid for mailings and things, and campaigns and things, so you know how expensive it can be to try to get a piece of mail to every household, which is outside of our budget. So we did the best we could. I can get, and for what it's worth, the, just to give you an idea of what the rankings were, and, you know, I don't want to, I'd be happy to email the, it's a lot of data, if anybody wants support through it, but I'm happy to share the results of that survey and all the feedback we got from the public. In fact, I'd be happy to email that out to the Commissioner of Mayor.
If you could, yeah.
Sure, absolutely. But for what it's worth, the stretch of 60 that's being discussed right now, I think that was, that came in third, in terms of areas that folks mentioned they would like to see accommodations in. Number one was some alternative to Main Street, which hopefully, a rail-to-rail effort can address. And number two was some pedestrian routes back to the hospital and Western Hills High School and Mandarin.
Collins Lane's not on there.
Actually, Collins Lane, frankly, right higher than I expected it to. But, you know...
I'll sell my front yard for a high price.
Yeah. Fair enough. Well, I'll email the full results to everybody.
Thank you.
But thanks for the talk. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
The only other walk bike thing we had is my view.
They do need all of them.
If we ever run out of our time yet, we don't want to. Oh, the stairwell comes back.
So I'll be really quick. I just wanted to give a quick update on the state of the KSU Trail, or it's also, also been referred to as the Pinsley Trail. This was the number two priority in the pedestrian and bicycle master plan that you've referred to several times this evening. The idea, the vision, is that it would start out behind the credit union downtown, and there's an old rail bed that cuts off the hill, that can connect into Kentucky State University, and provide an alternative to Main Street, East Main Street, where there's a dangerous hill with a narrow sidewalk and really not a lot of options for bicycles or pedestrians along that, along that route. It's actually part of KSU's master plan now that there would be a connection to that trail. And it's been a long process trying to acquire the necessary land. The city acquired the land from Pinsley several years ago, but there's about 1,000 feet down to the bottom of that trail that belongs to CSX. And I really want to commend city staff for working very hard to try to make contact with CSX. A lot of mail, email, and telephone calls have gone out to CSX in Florida, and honestly, the response has been very frustrating. Most calls aren't returned, most emails aren't returned, and occasionally, we do get some sort of, something, something back. I'm going to pass around a few, a few pictures related to, as I understand, the current situation. If you look at this side of the sheet, that's the division for the KSU Trail, and on this side of the sheet, you'll see some, do you mind passing them around? You'll see some aerial photographs. Now, the most recent correspondent from CSX had an assessment which was not made available to city staff. They said that they owned 11 acres, and they, and they had a $400,000 price tag on those 11 acres. I wanted to show you through these images what 11 acres would look like. In fact, what we need for the trail is less than an acre. That's the red area at the top that actually cuts along the old rail bed. If you thought that CSX owned everything along that hillside, as far as I can figure, it comes to less than five acres. I don't know where their 11 acres comes from, but that red area that's showing down at the bottom, that's what 11 acres would look like, and that's cutting well into the area that the city already owns with Pinsley. So it's frustrating to hear this, this feedback from Florida that really makes no sense here in Frankfurt. I, again, want to commend city staff for all the efforts they've made. I want to just put a bug in your ear as commissioners, that you start to think about condemnation as a way of accessing this, this property. And that may empower our solicitor to get their attention. But quite honestly, there's just, I don't, I just don't see how, how things can continue without responses from CSX on this, on this property. And right now, things are held up. The city has obtained a grant from the state to put this trail in. We've received a one-year extension, and now a second one-year extension. We're limited in the number of grants that we can write for trails until this money is spent, and it seems like a problem that I don't see a solution, simply because of the lack of response from, because of the lack of response from CSX. Questions or thoughts or comments?
Mike, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I just had one comment. I've walked a trail, and I was pleasantly surprised that the incline didn't seem to be any more than like 5 degrees.
Well, you know, it used to be a rail bed, and of course, it's hard to get a train up a hill. So it was an impressive feat of engineering back in 1870 when they put that in, to get up that cliff, and they cut it as gentle an incline as they possibly could. It really does provide a very nice alternative to Main Street for pedestrians or cyclists. And really, it could get pedestrians and cyclists off Main Street entirely.
And should we need any additional encouragement? It's featured prominently in the lead article in this beautiful publication that Joy and her folks were so, you know, wonderful to put together. As you can see, the cover, our cyclist enjoying the Riverview Trail, and the lead story is on "A City in Motion," titled "A City in Motion," and features that trail actually as a done deal. So we'd very much like to get this completed. For no other reason than to, you know, add our credibility.
If everybody's all right with it, I would, I would suggest that we direct the city attorney to get us a memo or something that gives us the pros and cons of condemnation of the property. That way, we've got a good sense of, because I mean, I know all of us can think of pros and cons off the top of our head, but, you know, it's a serious step to condemn private property. That's why you don't do it very often. But this may be one of those unique circumstances where it might make sense, and it actually might move the process faster and further, where you don't end up with condemnation, but you actually get them to respond, which they have responded a couple of times.
January, March.
Yeah, but they're sure not snappy, and this is really not something that's much of a priority for them. They're a multi-billion dollar company that's, and so you may have to do something like this, but if the city attorney could get us pros and cons, then we could make a decision. What do you all think?
Well, if nothing else, we could just, see if we can just do a condemnation, like for easement across it, or I don't know. What's the material going to be?
Sorry, what's the material?
Concrete or asphalt?
I, I know, do you know, Brent, what's in that grant proposal for the, the surface?
It's a paved surface.
I think it is a paved surface ultimately, but I think the...
Yeah.
The plan was to pave it.
Yeah.
Let's ask him, was it like asphalt or concrete?
Probably asphalt.
It's just not against the law, which has no economic use.
None. Great.
Well, thank you for considering it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you all for all your work that you do.
So y'all want to get pros and cons from Rob, or not? Does he object to getting them?
I don't object to it.
You can see.
You can see, I mean, it seems like the only route we might have, versus just positive negatives, if there's anything else that, as an attorney, that he sees, versus just pros and cons, if he sees there's any other routes we could take besides just...
He can just kind of give us an analysis of what, you know? I think that's a good addition.
I don't object. It'd be kind of funny to just read your history books.
Oh, that's how they got there, I guess.
That's what I was going to say. I'm not going to go there. But you, yeah.
Goes around, comes around, right?
Karma.
I think that's just, it's just not only by, it's...
Thank you.
Those presentations are good.
Good work.
Thanks for everything, guys.
Welcome back.
Next item will be discussion of tentative agenda. My phone, I think it's a big item. Tam Marcus is president.
Thanks for having me over. I brought two guests, I see some other volunteers, but we've got Gabe Rodwater here. He's our TNR committee chair, and can talk about TNR if need be. He's doing a great job. We're averaging, under Gabe's leadership, about 30 cats being altered a month for the last, since December 2012. So we're pretty excited about that. And then the other guy, actually, I just met, but he, he said he knew everybody and wanted to, he missed you, so he wanted to come say hello. You might know him, Freddie.
Well, that's not a missed team.
Just for the folks that don't know, like, TNR is trap and release.
Trap, neuter, and...
Oh, D and O, okay.
They just said they'll say trap, neuter, and then either release or return.
I thought we just...
Both terms are used. Now, I'm in a little bit of a disadvantage because I presented some things to you, I think it was the end of February, the work session, and I'm not sure what, you know, what city attorneys come up with since then, or had on the, in the way of the... what the city attorney's come up with since then, or had on the, in the way of the agenda for tonight, so was there...
Well, yeah.
City manager said he's got some information.
If I could.
Oh, yeah.
What, we had discussions on a staff level about preparing an ordinance amendment containing some or all of the changes that you had recommended back in February, and our city attorney, Rob Moore, was a bit unclear as to what his direction was. So we thought we would bring that back to the commission for clear direction on, yes, let's work on ordinance amendments that would be brought back to the commission, I don't know about June, but probably July, but as quickly as we could. And unfortunately, Rob is tied up in litigation. He will be here this evening, but, so that was really the purpose of today's discussion, in addition, Mr. Marcus, to getting direction from the commission on a contract and bringing that back for there, so we would have the ordinance amendments and the contract. I know you requested that we get that and Rockhead put together or Rock... So we're looking for a direction. Staff is looking for a direction from the commission.
Okay. Chris.
I just needed some clarification on a few things, and one of them is what you gave us in February.
Sure.
I think we're being, well, one, the one on February 10th, it said that would continue a contract from August 2007 designed to expire in July 2009. That must be mistaken, because this is 2014.
Let's see, was this in my request?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just wasn't sure if the... You know, I knew we're not doing something from 2009, so...
Well, now, what, we've actually been under a contract that began in August of 2007, and it was actually supposed to expire in July 2009. The contract that we're...
It was on extension then.
Well, it's been on, it was extended because the wording had provides that it would be extended with a 30-day cancellation notice by either party. So unless one of the other party canceled, it would just extend.
Okay. I'm just giving some clarification. And on another memorandum, I guess this went to us, from UTM, one says the benefits do not include equipment, vehicle. There are another place that it does, so I wasn't sure.
I put information on the cost of our animal control officer at approximately $60,000. That was salary plus benefits. The person does operate a vehicle and has other equipment, but I did not include in that $60,000. Is that one of the...
And I was looking at the contract, I guess, that Moore drafted, and I was just trying to see which one is correct.
What I was just trying to report is what the city's expenses are with regard to animal control, to provide some basis of knowledge.
And the last thing that I've seen is, I guess, what you're actually requesting is an increase of $20,000, $55,000 to $75,000. Okay, I'm clear there.
Thank you for letting us ask those clarification.
Oh, anything, yeah. I mean, it's a think while you're...
No, it's all right.
Partially while.
I guess the first thing I would say is, you and your group of volunteers and team have done a remarkable job. If you look where the Humane Society was seven or eight years ago, or however many years ago, and where they are now financially, and the way, the respect they have in the community, you all done remarkable. So my hat's off to that organization. As far as direction, you know, I'm for having you guys go at it, and my parameters would be, and I can't speak for the other four people, my parameters would be to go along with those changes that you brought up at the meeting regarding, I think, raising some fees and some various things that were in that. I would be for keeping the money the same and not having an increase. That sort of goes along with what we've been doing with other entities. I realize that you could make the case that this entity's different, but all the other entities make that same argument as well, in the same way that you make it. So it, and I understand it, but I would keep the money the same, and then not have any kind of a cost of living increase or anything like that in the future authorizations, and go that route. That would be my direction.
Just a follow-up question. Is the county increasing that? I noticed that somewhere states that they're actually responsible for the animal control.
Well, by statute, by state law, they would be. Now, of course, you know, the city, although the city, I guess, in theory could cede all that to the county.
They could.
You couldn't, you couldn't, because you have laws, you have ordinances, and your ordinance that's in place stipulates, you know, services, the lease law for cats and dogs, pretty much means that, you know, by bringing us animals, you've got a contract with somebody, and so the city, I think, from that standpoint, bears some responsibility based on the ordinance. So I don't know. I mean, I guess by state law, you could cede it to the county, but your ordinance would sort of prevent you from doing that. As far as the question about county funding, the county is funding us at about $52,000 a year now annually. They do have a slight increase, cost of living increase, or cost of business increase annually. The county also supplies a full-time ACO that, you know, that picks up animals in the county as well. Of course, the city does, the county does too. So that would be an additional expense, a contribution that they make. We are not actually asking the county for an increase at this time. The reason for that is that, if you look at the numbers, the county brings us 200 animals a year, the city brings us well over 500 animals a year. I think if you weigh the two things, a $55,000 service contract and a $52,000 service contract, and you say the county's bringing us 200 animals, and the city's bringing us 500 animals, you know, quite frankly, the city is not contributing its share for the services. If you go back to, and I appreciate your comments about the history, you know, if you go back to, actually, if you go back only to the period of the service contract in 2007, at that time, the Humane Society was functioning within its means financially, but quite honestly, the euthanasia rate of the Humane Society was somewhere between 60 and 80 percent. In the interim, a board was in place that sort of went in the opposite direction, kind of attempted to be a no-kill shelter, and was, you know, had a high rate of survival, but was spending about $10,000 a month in excess of its funds. So in both those periods, the city was providing $55,000 annually.
$14,500 prior to 2007, 2008.
Prior to, but still, with 2007, beginning in 2007, and from 2007 until the current period, the city was funding the Humane Society $55,000 annually, and those were occurring, those payments were occurring during those two differences. One period where there were 60 and 80 percent euthanasia, one period where the Humane Society was bleeding funds at $10,000 a month. The situation now, as you said, you know, is stabilized financially, but in addition to that, we have 95 percent live release rate for dogs, we have 80 percent overall. The challenge for us is cats, because cats are around 60 percent. However, that's still a much higher live release rate than the Humane Society operated on at the beginning of this contract period. So I guess I would say, you know, I would think that you could be proud as a commission, or if I were in your shoes, you'd say, you know, are we happy to fund this Humane Society $75,000 now as opposed to $55,000 in these periods where there either was a high rate of euthanasia, or they were financially irresponsible? You know, we'd rather back in now where they're financially, where they are financially irresponsible and saving large numbers of animals. And I don't have a problem, I think I told you before, you know, I don't have a problem with basing the service contract on a couple of things that are not currently in there, but that could be. One could be the live release rate. You know, one could be, hey, we'll fund you more while you're saving more animals. If you drop though to, you know, 20 to 40 percent live release rate, you know, we're not going to feel good about funding you this amount. The other thing that I think would be fair is the numbers, quite simply, you know. But if you're bringing us 500 animals a year, you know, if you do a service contract with Company A to lay pipe, and it's $60 a foot, and it's a $1,000 foot contract at $60,000, you're not going to tell them, I'm sorry, we're only going to pay you $40,000 for that service.
Excuse me, but you're not in a profit business, first off. Second, your balance sheet demonstrates twice the operating revenues in reserve, ours is only 30 percent. I realize you're putting money aside for equipment, probably a future building, but your financials are stronger than ours.
Well, actually, most of the reserve that you see is not reserved, it's a restricted grant. It's restricted to spay neuter. It was from Murna Mitchell, so it's not a reserve.
So you can't use it for purposes?
No, it's restricted use. So our reserve, really, we have no reserve. The only account that we have that's not restricted, that would not be a reserve, or that could be considered a reserve, is about, I think it's about $25,000.
Right.
So there's not much of a reserve there for anything.
Well, like I said, I think you're doing great. I don't think we, I'm not forgiving any more money. I understand the arguments, but every group, every group that is in that type of nonprofit believes the same thing, and I just don't think we have the resources.
Did you have a presentation, or were you going to do a thank you, or any remarks?
I mean, I guess I don't know that I had anything new, you know, I have, we've talked about before. I mean, I'd be glad to, you know, I'd love to have more feedback. I think it's great to have Commissioner Roach, you know, give me his opinion, and I'd love to hear more, and then better know how to respond, you know, because there are several things that I could raise. And I don't know, as far as the ordinance, whether, if you'd like me to go over any of the points that were in the ordinance, and the recommended changes, and the rationale behind that, you know, I'd be glad to do that. Really, I'm here for whatever, however I can help you all with your decision-making process.
I think Rob integrated the items that you brought up in February, whatever month that was, he integrated that into what we look at.
I would say the community cat initiative is very important to us, and we're really hopeful that that can be, that that would be addressed in the code amendment, I should say.
Well, what does everybody think about that? The community cat colony.
And just to your concerns about financially, that would really help financially as well.
That's releasing them back to where you found them, that where you returned them to their...
Yes, it's, they're typically, they're part of colonies, so we alter them, and then we return them to the colony where they're already being cared for, and of course...
Really a different hotel in a lot of places.
Well, the big advantage, though, is that over time, it's, it showed to be the only way to begin to reduce the feline overpopulation problem. And so, obviously, in the interest of all of us, you know, even financially, at some point, maybe instead of bringing us 300 cats a year, you'd be bringing us 100 cats a year or less. And then we'd ask for less money.
I don't know it. I'm not confident enough in being for cat colonies. I can see that being a disaster, but I can also understand your point, which is it's the only way to lower the number. But, you know, like, we had a little bit of that at one of my apartment complexes, you know, people don't want them. And so, if you start to have those in neighborhoods or subdivisions, and then they're told they can't do anything about those cats, and they're hanging out everywhere, and they don't want them around, et cetera, what's our response going to be?
Well, I think you still, I don't think it precludes having what would be considered a nuisance animal, or, you know, a threatening animal. I think that's still part of the ordinance, but generally, the colonies are docile, and, you know, they're fed, and they're not a harm to anyone. And so, but, you know, if there were a serious number of complaints in any one particular area, then that would have to be addressed as a nuisance.
Over time, though, that nuisance would become smaller and smaller.
Well, and that's right. The hope is that if you, you know, if you have something in place, that you can start to reduce that population overall.
Do you all have more questions, or do you need any more questions from Mr. Marcus? And we're still looking at other changes today in the ordinance that folks have presented to us, and I've had some comments from folks in public that, on our telling ordinance, that some people that do let their dog out during the morning time, and tethered, but they're saying they're responsible, and they have their copy, and then they go back, and before they go to work, and take it back in. So starting to hear some feedback. We'll probably have to address this.
Will we have to address this before the budget is passed?
Well, at least the budget request, now, that wasn't included in the budget that we already looked at, but we take a...
So...
So we either take, we either pass the budget as it is, and then do a budget amendment, or you can amend the budget now, and get your first two readings in, and I'm sure that by us, city manager, the finance director, David, they had a recommendation if we were going to increase the budget, it's probably, on your behalf, probably better to do it now, than do the budget amendment.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Because I'm confused, just to clarify for my sake.
Me too.
Is the service, is a service contract part of the budget? Or, because I thought service contracts were...
No, but just if there's going to be additional monies, is kind of what they're, someone I think we're asking. I may have misunderstood their question in terms of timing on... Orders changes, we don't have it timed at line, but the budget has been approved by the end of this law previously.
Well, everybody's clear, we are talking about a service contract with Humane Society, right? Not a, not an agency contribution.
Yes.
Right.
Well, I think they, I think they, but just, any kind of appropriations have to go through that, or we can do, as I said, a budget amendment. We can do any time. And just, I guess I'd point out too, the difference with the Humane Society is, we're not funding or giving a contribution to a charity or an agency. We're actually contracting with the Humane Society for a service to handle the animals that our animal control officer is picking up.
Mayor, I think that's right, but it's also an issue of semantics. The other agencies could make a similar argument if they were sophisticated perhaps in that area, and argue that it's a service contract. You could say Rossum serves so many people, so as a result, the city doesn't have to serve them, and they get so much per person. You could argue the same thing with the senior citizens and others. I'm fine with saying it's a service contract, but I think we need to realize it's largely an issue of semantics with a number of our agencies, because they would argue that they're also providing a service. They just didn't come up with, to do it this way. But I still think the staff needs direction. It looks like the three areas are money, cat colonies, and the other changes. Is that...
And I apologize for being late. I was stuck in a mediation up in Lexington, so anyway, I left before it was over, and left my co-counsel to handle it. But I looked at the proposed provisions carefully that the Humane Society submitted, and it looked to me that the change to the fees was necessary. I think that their fees have been inordinately low for many years. It looked like the, some research based upon information that Ramona provided to me indicates that the issue of having, of allowing cat colonies to deal with, you know, feral cats and cats that are just out in the community is certainly a very legitimate way to approach that issue. It's not some brand-new idea. They use it in Cook County, Illinois, which is where Chicago is, so that's definitely an issue that the commission should consider. As far as changing the ordinance to provide more specific prohibition... consider. As far as changing the ordinance to provide more specific prohibitions when you're talking about taking care of animals, I would recommend against making the ordinance more specific, because as you all heard from County Attorney Rick Sparks, when he came in and spoke to the board, he was not in favor of more specific language, because he says that actually makes it more difficult to prosecute. And many times, he'll just rely upon the broad language in the state statute. So if, you know, I don't know where you all want to go with the community cats. If you want to provide, want the staff to provide some additional information, we can certainly do that. With respect to the contract with the Humane Society, I think there is one distinction between that and perhaps the senior citizens arguing that they're providing a service contract, and that is the city has chosen to act in animal control ordinance. And since the city has an animal control ordinance, then you have to have someplace to take the animals. Unless the city wants to get into the business of having a dog pound or animal pound, the Humane Society provides that very badly needed service, and that is something that does need to be addressed appropriately in budget. So.
Thank you, Rob.
I agree with everything you just said, and I'd rather see it on the budget thing than, I don't want to go to the library lease rate, because that's when you get into counting, you know. And we don't want to, you know, be involved in that. If we're going to give extra money, we give the extra money. And that, because I did see all the other figures that it could have been higher. We based it on a lot of other things, and I think that would be the same thing if, talking about library lease rates, you know, you're talking about bubbles in budget. We should put a specific number, you know, throughout the years, you know, how the budget's going to run. And if changes are made, then we make those changes at the time, because I don't know what changes would take place, like when you all do get a new building somewhere, or, you know, all those changes, you know, have to be looked at at that time. But right now, it looks like, I think Commissioner Roach hit it on the head and said, dollars, the cat colonies, I really hadn't read much about it, but it sounds like a great idea if they're not going to, if the numbers are going to go down, because that would be one of the goals. And I like what you just mentioned about the ordinance changes. Since we've already been down that road, to keep it broad instead of trying to be specific. So I guess my question after all that rambling is what direction from here is needed?
So we need, like, kind of votes on those three areas?
Yes. I believe the city attorney needs some direction as to what to prepare, how much, and whether or not it does include the cat colonies.
I like the colonies. Who likes the colonies?
So, want to get information?
One for.
I'd like to get some information on it.
What kind of information do you need?
Well, like, for example, do you want a number of cat colonies in your subdivision?
They're already there.
Well, they're not mine, and I'd like to know, make sure that, make, and I, make sure that there is empirical data that demonstrates that this actually works, and then we can maybe check and see, well, how's it really work? Because my gut tells me that it won't, but I know nothing about it, and that we'll end up with more rather than less. But I'm hoping they're right. So if they're right, then it probably is an easy call.
And we can provide the studies. They are online where they've actually done studies. We can provide those to you.
And then we also need to realize that when these, if we do end up having some of these colonies in more upscale neighborhoods, I wonder what their response is going to be, because normally, these cat colonies are probably not going to be in those type of neighborhoods. But when they go to those neighborhoods, I wonder how keen they'll be on them.
Just as a point of clarification, I hope you don't mind, we're not putting colonies anywhere they don't already exist, so.
Well, won't they, won't they, won't some of them create?
No.
It'll just be where they are.
The whole point is that we altered, we were able to alter the animals.
Well, I got that as a point. What if it doesn't work?
So they're not going to increase the ideas if they would start to decrease.
So you just have them where they have them, you wouldn't, they wouldn't expand?
You're thinking they're going to relocate. They're not going to relocate.
We want them to contract, not expand. So, no, we're not, they're not, there wouldn't be any new colonies.
So what if there was a new?
We're trying to identify colonies, you know, so where they currently exist.
Okay.
And then we try to address each colony where they currently exist. And so the data shows where it's done, it's being done extensively throughout the country. The data shows that over time, that that is actually the only way to reduce overpopulation. But we only address the colonies as we hear about them, and then we, you know, we get to them as quickly as we can. And so, over time, those colonies should start to reduce.
Information.
We'll do it. Thanks, Rob. So we'll get information on that, and then probably the quicker answer that they need is whether or not there's going to be enough support to increase contractual agreement for remuneration for that amount we pay Humane Society to handle the animals that the city animal control officer picks up.
And I could support it, but at the same time, I'd want to make sure that we have the second reading of the budget the next time we meet. I would prefer not to have to have a special meeting to reread the budget.
And we can just amend it.
But that's just me.
Just doing a amendment.
We can do a budget amendment.
Just doing a budget.
No direction, maybe?
So you could just put, you all could just draft something that has a number from 55,000 to 75,000, and then when we have to vote, we just vote?
Right. And I would propose to probably meet with Steve Dawson, the Finance Director, talk to him about costs that we've incurred the last year to see, you know, to see what number would be appropriate. So we'll put some kind of number in there, realizing that you all certainly can change it and probably will.
Does that help?
Absolutely. Yeah. And the only other thing, and I'll get out of your way, just to, maybe also to help with Commissioner Roach's comments, because, you know, one distinction I do want to also make is that when we talk about the numbers, you know, there are two numbers. One is the numbers the city actually brings us. We talked about that. The other part is the numbers the community brings us. And so, if we have 2,000-plus animals, the city brings us 500, the county 200. Out of that other 1,300, and I can't honestly tell you how many are city and county, but even if you split them in half, you know, we're not asking the city or the county for any contribution toward that. So the contract, you know, that we're talking about is only for those animals you're bringing us. When we determine our costs, which I think the Finance Director agreed with $7 a day per animal was, and that's a few years ago, you know, we're proud if that figure still holds. But, you know, that's a pure cost of what we think is maybe about $98,000, you know, annually, just for what you bring us. And then, as I say, just to draw the distinction, that would not count the animals that citizens from the city of Frankfurt bring us as well. So the contribution we get from there would be through license fees, primarily through license fees and that sort of thing. So just so you have that distinction in mind. And that's all I got.
Well, I think we all recognize the great work that you all do, and I think all the commissioners who express support for the Humane Society's great work that you all are doing, your volunteers, and we appreciate everything that you all are doing. I'm sure the commission will weigh everything diligently, and maybe July we'll have a final decision on it. If not, I doubt it'd be a June meeting, but you never know.
Thank you all very much.
I apologize if I have to bring back Commissioner Roach's name.
I have to stay right here, Mayor. I don't want to take your pick. That's all right, buddy.
That's not my take.
I know, but I'm just kidding. Discussion of tentative agenda. Have I got anything?
Um, I do. Just need a minute.
Take all the time you need.
Really? He didn't mean that. He didn't mean that?
She's right.
There's sarcasm in that?
Never.
Not me.
Never.
Sure. I actually had two. I have a couple of things I want to bring up this evening. And most of it is just for clarification and transparency so that we're all kind of on the same page. There's some talk around town that comes to me, and I'm sure some of you all hear it as well. Item 7.1, which is regard to the feasibility study with Parks and Rec, that Branstead and Carroll Inc. is the company who was awarded the bid. Parks and Rec is here.
There he is.
Hey, gentlemen. Hey, it's your favorite, right? It's your favorite. But just for, can you just give a little clarification for transparency purposes regarding item 7.1? How, how this company received the bid?
Well, we sent out 10 copies to companies. I tried to send out as many as I could, local, hopefully we were getting a local company to bid. Sent out 10 copies, received the copies, had a committee of four. They're on the committee, me, Rebecca Hall, had two from the county, Charlie Lewis, who is the Parks Director for the county, and their grant writer, Ann Northcott.
Great.
We read the two, we only received two. We read the two separately. We met and scored, we had a scoring sheet of 100 points possible. We scored them separately. We met down at Ann Northcott's office and graded the responses. And these are the responses that we came up with, and that's the prices that they submitted that they would do the scope of services for.
Did you get any feedback saying that what we were asking for and the price we were asking was too little for the job scope that we were asking to be done? That the price was
From these two?
From any of, from any of them?
ACOM has done some work with Brad Thomas for, I guess, for transportation or whatever. She said that she thought it might have been a little low, but you got to take into consideration they're in Chicago.
Right.
And they're going to have to pay a lot of money for transportation and lodging costs that a local company is not going to have to pay for.
True.
So a lot of times, when you get a price, if a price is not locally, it's usually going to be a little bit higher just on those reasons alone. But that was the only one.
True. And one more question was, who, who wrote the RFP that was sent out?
We got a generic copy from Branstead and Carroll. I didn't feel comfortable in writing it. I've never done one before, so we got a generic copy. Didn't favor anybody. Everybody had the same questions, but I wanted to get a good one that they probably got from another agency that had submitted to them.
So we got the copy from them, and they got the bid?
Yes.
Okay.
But four people graded them separately?
Uh huh.
I know there's been some accusations out there.
Right, I'm just, this is just
Oh, I know, and four people graded them separately. And we had a grading scale of 100. If you all would like to look at those, I have those in my office. You can look at them separately. Somebody wants to do an open records, they can get those also. But we graded them all.
Thank you.
We had four professionals that graded them, so, well, three. I don't count myself sometimes, but I do know that everything was done proper and everything, and
And they're based out of Lexington?
I'll be glad to answer.
Right. And they're based out of Lexington?
Yes, they're based out of Lexington. Moody and Nolan is based out of Covington.
Yes. Thank you. I'm just trying to get some transparency to clear out the river pool that happens in our small town, but thank you.
Any other questions that I can answer?
Anybody else have anything on the tentative agenda?
Maybe some new old business.
Some new old business.
City Manager, if you'd be able to
Finance Director Dawson.
Thank you, Jim.
Grants Manager, Interior Director, City Attorney. Mr. Moore, do you have any comments? Staff report?
One comment, and that is on item 4.4. That's the ordinance amending the Frankfurt Code of Ordinances to incorporate the legislative changes to the alcoholic beverages licenses. The copy that was provided with the agenda for the first reading did not contain all of the new proper names. So instead of this being a second reading, it will need to be a first reading. And that doesn't, that's not going to cause any problems with respect to the ordinance, but we do need to read, have a second first reading. And then, just at some point in time, the commission will need to consider, and maybe the July work session would be an appropriate time, will need to consider whether or not it wants to allow the sale of alcohol, alcoholic beverages, when the polls are open, because the statute has now been changed.
Right. You just got rid of my new business.
To allow that. And Mr. Dawson and I discussed that, and we thought we might want to do that in July, to allow people that have alcoholic beverage licenses to, time to contact you all and let you know what their request would be on that issue.
Yeah.
Well, if everybody's on board with that, why don't we just put it on the July work session?
I'm on board.
Me, too.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Moore, City Clerk, do you need?
Nothing. I think Phil Skell
They're pick over
My apologies.
I think I may have been behind Commissioner Bowles.
Sewer Director.
We've been given an opportunity to submit a EPA Integrated Municipal Stormwater/Wastewater Planning Grant. And we would like to put that on the agenda for action by the commission. You'll all be provided a copy of this to read, but it may provide a chance for us to implement some alternative financing methods to fund stormwater projects. And so, the timing hit very nicely. The submittal has to be into EPA hands by the 27th of June. And so, it's a pretty short queue, but I've talked with our URS, the stormwater consultant that's helped us to date, and they're willing to even help us put this together. We will never see the money. The money will be, the actual consultant will be chosen by EPA. They will be paid by EPA, and it probably will not be URS. So I thought that was very nice of them to agree to help us get the grant, even though probably there's, there's really no financial interest in them to, it's not like they're going to get the money to get the grant. But if there's no objections, I'd like to put this on the agenda for your action in two weeks.
And when can, when will we get the information to look at?
You'll have it, I will have it to Ramona tomorrow, so I don't know whenever you get your next
Court packet next week, unless you want it sooner.
If you want it sooner, she can put it in your box tomorrow.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skell. Public Works Director.
I actually have four things. The first is the Green Hill Cemetery wall. We are hoping to start on that probably the week after this. We have received a emergency PO to do half the wall. We did get pricing from two contractors to do that. The one that we're using has said, hey, why don't you just let me do the whole wall, and you pay me the other half next year? It's easier to do it all at once than to do it twice. I said, well, I'll ask the commission what they think about that idea. Do they lower the price? Well, I don't know that it would lower it, but it would, I would have to go out and get a price next year for the second half. And so, I think it's easier to do it all at once and tie it all in together. So.
Not to be unusually cheap, but perhaps you could see if they cut the price a little bit, if you're willing to do that.
Well, they gave us the price to do the entire wall, and we only were going to do half of it because that's
And they're willing to do half of it for half the price?
Half the price or all for all. So, whatever you guys think on that.
And we're, you know, right now, it's an empty dollar figure.
Oh, you want the dollar figure now? To do half the wall is $28,800, so to do the whole wall would be twice that.
Okay.
Plus the cost of the stone. We have to buy the stone.
And we have to buy the stone?
Yeah, we have to buy the stone. Not the rock, the gravel that goes behind it.
Take some out of that empty pool.
Seems fine to me. What do you all think? What do you all think?
Yes.
Okay. There was some discussion in the past about two-way traffic on Main Street. We looked at it, or the state looked at it to make sure it didn't mess up their model. And Main Street itself, it didn't. That's looking at cars in, cars out. If we want to go forward with that, we would have to look at it from a geometric standpoint and look at can vehicles make the movements still? What is that going to do with sight distance? All that is going to take an engineer to look at that. We've got a price to look at that. And from Diane, or from Jacobs, who has a contract with planning to do that kind of work. And it would be probably anywhere from $12,000 to $15,000 to look at that impact. My question to you today is, do you guys want me to go forward with that? Okay.
Was that three people shaking their head no? Okay. I just looked up like...
We are still in negotiations on the design contract for Second Street and Bridge Street. I did not put that in your packet because I've had to pull it the last two months. If I can get it in there by the end of the week, I'd like to have permission. If we can come up with who we're going to use by the end of the week, I'd like to ask to be able to put that in so we can get that started. And then the last is St. Clair lots are in, and we're talking with the plant board. They are...
Those the ones we were supposed to get like December?
Yes.
Okay, I'll just check it.
Yes, those are finally in. And I think you asked about it last month.
Yes.
I was just like, it's talked about for months. Oh, and finally ordering them.
No, we didn't finally order them. We ordered them back then. They just finally came.
Did they give us a deal?
Excuse me, I didn't mean to correct.
They give us one for free?
I know.
Late?
So we'll find out from the plant board what the schedule is to get those in. So they did not give us one for free.
Should we give them their payment seven months late, too?
If I can do that, I would. So that's all I have.
That's what you do with granite countertops when they mess that up?
I just want to say one thing. I know in the update last week, we are having a lunchtime concert series on Friday the 13th, and Jerry Catherine Howe is playing. I did not know what the time, but at 1:03.7, it's going to give away free lunch to the first 100 people that come. If you haven't been to the amphitheater, you really need to go. It's really nice down there, and we're trying to drum up some business. It's awful nice of the radio station to come, but it's to the first 100. So Commissioner Roach, if you're 102, you won't get lunch.
Thanks, ma'am.
11:30.
We'll be there 11:15.
Planning Director Mueller?
The event and property ordinance status. Website has the list. That list is going to change. Several, a handful have made the repairs by the May 31st deadline. And we did receive two appeals, so we'll be processing those to the Board of Zoning adjustment next month. And then the final list will be done hopefully by the July 1 deadline, otherwise as soon as possible thereafter. That's all I have. That concludes the reports.
Old business?
I have old, new.
Why don't you just put it under old, Commissioner Bowles?
Yeah, I've been meaning to bring this up for a while, and I just keep forgetting. But I guess it's a little bit late in the budget cycle, but maybe not. You know, months ago, the State Journal put all of those department head salaries on the front page of the paper. And I noticed our sewer director is significantly below the other department heads. And I know that that person in that position has been here longer than any other department head. And I know that that position is extremely responsible and has a lot of important work to do. And I think that I want that looked at. I want human resource workers to look at what we need to do to bring that position up to par with the other folks in their department head positions. Because I've noticed in a lot of organizations, when you come in and you stay a while, eventually people that come in at that same level are making a whole lot more than you. And that's what's happened to our sewer director. So can we please look at that? And if it's not, it doesn't have to be too late to do anything this year, but make it a priority for next year. And if the city manager thinks we can do something with that this year, it just needs to be fixed. And it should have been fixed before, and I kept meaning to bring it up, and I haven't. And I think that's important. Because we're talking about creating an environment where people feel good to work. And if I were in that position, it would not make me feel very happy about it. So I think it's a matter of equity. We need to be equitable about that. So I don't know. What do you think, Roach? Commissioner Payne's heading? Is there any support?
No problem looking at it. The fact would sound like that's what you're asking.
I'm asking to look at how...
That would give us the information that we need, because right now I've not looked at all the salaries. So I don't...
Well, it was on the front page of the paper. When was that? Like probably six...
I mustn't get that particular page.
About a year ago. Yeah. And it was significantly lower. And that position is not any less... I would say with what's going on now, it's got a lot more responsibility than maybe in times past. And so...
Let us do the survey for the north of HR, and we'll provide you that information. That's okay?
Other old business?
Yes. Are you done, Commissioner Bowles?
Yes. Well, for now.
For now?
For that issue, yes.
Okay. Just with old business, and I might have missed a few things in the weekly reports. I don't receive documents that are in the DAT format. I only receive DOC formats via emails based on my own computer and my phone.
What kind of takes I have?
Well, I've just asked not to receive, so I just have sometimes failed to pick up my weekly reports. The IT Improvement Plan. When this was given to us on June 26th of 2014, we were also told that that project we'd be working on in December. And improvement and strategy will place to accomplish the project by June of 2014. So I'm just looking, and you can just give us some follow-up where we are within that IT Improvement Plan that was presented to us.
We will have a recommendation probably in July.
Okay.
We have a meeting this week.
Okay. Could you send an email regarding that to the commissioners? Thank you.
Other old business? I got some old. I was just making sure I was last. Val? Okay. Collections, topic I brought up before. Tom, not to interrupt you.
That's all.
You know, I brought that up last meeting, I think, about we only collect 68, 70% of our garbage fees. I guess I would like, perhaps, if you could get to the commission, and you could email us if you want, or talk to us now if you want, suggestions on how we can increase that percentage. And even though we all kind of laughed when you said quit doing their garbage, I think you should put everything on the table, you know? Because that, like I said before, I think that percentage demonstrates almost in a sense that the government's governing power is not even legitimate when you have that level of compliance. It's not quite there, but it's not too far from there. So I don't know if the best way to do it is for us to just talk about it now, or for you to get us some suggestions, or whatever everybody thinks. Let me put together some suggestions. Not being in the collections business myself, but other people are, so let me talk to some other people. He's not listening.
I'm sure Steve could help you.
Yeah.
Or attorney.
Or the attorney.
But if you could get us that, I think we've got to do a lot better than that.
Right. I'm sure Tom and I will sit down and talk about it.
Okay.
Along that same line on collections, Gary, if you could get us some suggestions in addition to ones you've already given to boost our collections on property maintenance code. That one's worse, and there's obvious reasons for that. You know, that's 1% to 10%, depending on what year we're in. And on that one, I don't think there's any mistake that the citizens don't consider that a legitimate function. And so as a result, they just don't pay it. Is there any other fees that we're...
Coffee?
You know, asking, you know, charging people that we're having a high level of noncompliance? I mean, property taxes, we did great. There's an obvious reason for that. Is there any other fees that we do poor at? Like recreation. Jim, how do you all do on fee collection for baseball, softball, or various things?
We pretty much get all of it.
Otherwise, they don't play.
Unless we get a bad check or something, then we have to track them down or something like that.
They pay on the front end, don't they?
Yes. Or the credit card won't come, but yes. There's always that possibility. It used to be real bad, but now with a lot of people pay with credit cards, so that's helped us out a lot, the credit card.
So is there any other fees that we're not getting a good collection on?
We can get better. We know, and you've seen a lot of those, and you and I had a bit of a conversation.
Yeah. I'm sure yours is going to get much better, or I'd have brought it up.
But I mean, we would hope ours get better. And through collections, I will say, through the actual collection process, I think we're doing a bit better. And honestly, the fact that people are getting letters from their attorney that say you need to appear in court on this day, and then they send the check in. And so there's a lot of those new...
Sorry.
Another kind of old business is we've been getting some things on personnel matter, and the latest thing we got was asking us to put it on the June agenda.
Agenda, correct.
And I guess my question to Rob is, do we have to do that, or can we not?
You do not have to.
Okay, well then...
It's your discretion.
My 50 cents is to not put it on.
And if you are going to consider that, I would ask that you do that in July. And the reason for that is, I'm going to have to have Mr. Baughman come for me for the June meeting, because my wife's making me go on vacation. I don't want to go.
Okay.
So anyway, if you do choose to have that meeting, I'd like to be here for that, and so July would be the time. That's right.
So what do you guys want to do about that?
I'll always go for a hearing. You want to go for a hearing?
Always. You just requested to appear at the meeting.
Oh, oh. Let him appear.
What do you guys think?
I don't have a problem with the opinions. I can't tell anything from this.
What do you think?
That's fine.
Okay. Well, then, looks like we need to. Then I guess we want to try to put him on July, since that would help the city attorney. So I guess if you guys could do that, that would make that smoother.
Great.
Another old business, my favorite topic, the downtown stuff you're doing, the regs and all that stuff, and we're trying to get a grant, et cetera. Where are we on that?
We have submitted it to the zoning update committee. We met in late April. And half of it. First part, two parts, uh, three. The first part is changing the professional office and the central general business district that are nonhistoric on Second Street and Third Street. We were, my understanding from the city commissioners, is take the good parts out of the form code, none of the maintenance, none of the historic preservation, but the stuff that people like. And try to make more uses, more availability of the properties. And don't change zones. So I've attempted that. The zoning committee made some suggestions of changing that. We meet tomorrow night, and most likely that section will move forward if I have permission from you all by August, please.
And then, Correa, I'm sorry.
On amending the actual historic regulation, coming in three, breaking into three guidelines, we applied for a grant. The grant has been awarded. We haven't got it in writing, but we've been terribly told it's been awarded. The, I met with the Harris Council a couple of weeks ago, went over the draft changes. And they don't believe, they brought up some really good points. They believe that a preservation ordinance stands much better in its own entities, its own ordinance, defending the basis of it than to take elements out of it and stick it in individuals' wanting to, which is what I had proposed. And I explained my version, they explained their version, and I'm okay conceding to their version because it doesn't cost a lot.
Can we still make the changes?
We can still make the changes. The hiccup is, if we go forth the way we have it drafted and where we're headed, we don't, we can't get the grant. They're going to, the city commission needs to decide, are we redoing the guidelines and going with the grants? You approved to apply for the grant. Now we have been 99.8% awarded the grant and still have it in writing. Then the commission has to actually allocate funding for that. You have not done that. So it is in the budget proposal. So recovered budget-wise, or it will have $7,800 of the cost. And that will go back to the general plan if we don't do this. So that decision kind of needs to be made. But the version I have, they have a lot of strong concerns.
Well, I'm sure they do.
Well, that's what they do.
If I continue and go with the grant, the grant won't be doing the focus of what it was intended for. Because it'll be basically doing illustrative pictures instead of writing new by guideline codes.
So what do we need to do?
We're doing two things. We need to decide either...
No, but what do you think we need to do?
We...
I'd like to get this done before I die.
The commission had applied for the grant with the hopes and efforts, from what I heard, is that it allowed me to do more other planning related work, many of the consultants would work. And that will go through their process. I like that, but I've got 98% of work done. Now it's a matter of holding a lot of meetings and trying, and the work I don't know if it really meets your intent. I would love to give it to you all, do a presentation maybe, and then you can decide.
Why don't we do that?
Why don't we do it?
How about the July work session?
If I'm shooting at the right spots or not.
How about the July work session? Everybody on board with that?
Yep.
Is that still much harder?
I think it'll be fine. Yes. Because I pulled everything off the zoning update committee for tomorrow night, other than the professional office and the central general business district.
I just don't know if there was a dead month for that grant.
Well, since we don't officially have it in writing now, I think we're fine.
Okay. Okay. Great.
Thank you. And one month won't kill it hurting. Now a full synopsis of that.
Great.
Thank you.
I got one last old business. Foreclosures? The, I saw in the update that we had done some foreclosures, and I think that we can start on the ones after May 31st of the places that have been abandoned urban property ordinance, the ones in yellow. Is that right?
What was your question?
Is it, are we now able to start the foreclosing on these in yellow?
I think the commission is going to want to have a cost analysis before we do that.
Understand that.
And here's why. Before you file foreclosure action, you need to do a, what I call mini-title search to make sure that you identify anyone that has an interest in that property that you're going to foreclose on. So that costs a little bit of money. Then you have to file a, then you have to file the complaint, and that's filed, so you have to pay the filing fee. And then you go through the process of the case. And then you'll get your summary judgment saying, yes, you can now sell the property. And you get your order of sale, and then you have to have the commissioners go out and appraise the property, and there's a fee involved in that. And then you have your publicity fee, so there's a fee involved in publicity. And then you have your publicity fee, so there's a fee involved in publicity. And then the property sold at the courthouse steps. The problem with a number of these properties is that they are not going to have any value where someone wants to buy them at the courthouse steps. So the city is going to be the entity that will buy them at the courthouse steps. So the city is then going to not only have to pay the fees associated with the foreclosure, but then also to get any tax money back after they purchased it at the courthouse steps, then we'll have to auction them. And I think it's a little bit, I'm not sure that if someone's not going to purchase them at the courthouse steps, I'm not sure that they're going to purchase them from the city at auction as well. So we just need to, we need to go through and provide you all with.
Cost benefit analysis.
A cost benefit analysis so you know whether to proceed. And what we've tried to do, you know, we filed five foreclosure actions and we've actually sent out probably 15 courtesy copy of complaints telling people we're getting ready to file foreclosure action. And those people have either paid the taxes that are due or the majority of them have entered into payment plans where they're actually going to go ahead and pay. So what we've tried to do on the front end is to identify those properties where the property's worth something and we know that the property owner is going to be interested in avoiding having the property sold at the courthouse steps. But we will look at the abandoned houses list on the list or the abandoned properties on the list and come up with a cost benefit analysis and give you all something to review at the July work session if that's okay.
I think that's great. That's what I was hoping you'd say.
Thank you.
Because I understand, understand that. I ask that all the time. I'm just trying to do something to improve the housing stock in the community.
And that's, at the same time, we will also provide you, earlier this year, you all were provided with a list of properties that were owned by the city that the city could perhaps sell. And I prepared the RFP for that, but I need to meet with Mr. Mueller and Mr. Bradley to review those properties because some of those properties are located in, they're, I guess, informal portions of our stormwater program. You know, they're properties that are in low-lying areas and if someone builds a house there, yeah. So anyway, at the same time, we'll provide you with that.
Because basically you're saying some of those we may want to keep.
Correct.
Just like this other.
Correct.
That's all I have on old business. What about new business?
I have a couple of them, but they're kind of small football. I apologize if I wasn't able to send you this list. They're very short. I got the phone call today and somebody might just know the answer to this. The question to me was, does the city bus that drives through, do they have to stop at railroad tracks? The two of them went by the day at 10:45, didn't stop. I told them I didn't know how to answer.
I think that's a school bus.
School buses have to stop. I told them that part. I said, I didn't know about city buses.
I don't think so. I'll double check, but I don't believe.
Okay, so I put no on that for right now. I don't think. And somebody called me and they said, appreciate, this is about signs, street signs and I don't know what the state does, it's a Martin Luther King draft. They said one new sign was replaced, which is good, but the other sign, I guess it's about a football stadium I had to drive in, has its misspelled. Martin Luther King draft.
State actually.
Okay. I'll. And the last person. The last one is just a question of who I need to direct this later to. She wants to sell stuff at the expo. She has her own, you know, has to license stuff. And I told her, I really don't know who, who's running that. Is that?
It's too late now?
No, it'll be for next year. Who runs that?
Tourism.
Stan Southie.
There's actually a Capital City Expo Corporation that exists.
That's right. Stan Southie.
Stan.
Southie.
Thank you. I told you I had three of them.
Other new business?
Do you want me to move a tournament?
I've been waiting for you.
I will move it.
Second.
I'll move it.
Yeah, I. I. It's a night.